You are watching XS Lapeur County, Channel 97. Coming up next is January 8th, 2024, meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www.xslaportcounty.org.
You have to speak just a few inches from the mic so that the residents on screen can hear that. With that, at this time, I would ask for nominations from the floor for the president of the council.
I make a motion to nominate Joyce Schmidt as council president.
Can we have a motion by Deanna? Is there a second?
Second.
Kendra, a second?
Chief, just for a reminder because we do have a member that is calling that everything needs to be vocalized.
So we have a motion by Deanna, sent in by Kendra, for Joyce Schmidt as president of the council. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Her name done, ask Clerk Collins, please, do a roll call vote.
Joyce Schmidt, how do you vote on that motion?
Do I get to vote?
You get to vote for yourself.
Okay, yes.
Any rankings?
Yes.
JDH?
Yes.
Shannon Wojcik?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yes.
All right, congratulations, Madam President. I will now turn the meeting over to our newly elected president.
Thank you. I only am going to send the nomination. I think all it gets me is the Senate chair and the gamble. I'll take it, and I'll try my best to keep us moving forward. With that, who said, we're now looking for a nomination for vice president, and I would make a motion to nominate Anita Remigius as vice president. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Roll call vote.
Roll call.
Joyce Schmidt?
Yes.
JDH?
Yes.
Shannon Wojcik?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yes.
I don't get to vote for myself.
I need to.
Yes, to voting for myself. Okay, congratulations. The only opening remarks I have is, we're new here up here. We're off, trying really hard.
How's everybody doing? How about cameras? Cameras okay?
Who are you?
Just getting a quick announcement. How's Rolling Stone Magazine, USA Today, Fox 32 Chicago, those in the news?
Mitch, either if you're attending, we'll have to have a seat without a public comment at this time. We're conducting official town business, so.
Okay, so we'll get an opportunity to speak our grievances?
Under public comment. Under public comment, yes.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're all new up here. We're going to try really hard, do our very best for the town. So all I can say is, please be kind. Approval of the minutes. Town council meeting, December 11th, 2023. I had a question on this minutes. There's a stop where it says Barnes and Thorgur was paid $819. And then down below it says Dr. Lemay made a motion to not pay or approve the invoice totaling $819. But that check was paid and mailed out. And they also said, vote five to nothing, that they would pay for nothing further going forward. So can I ask, was that just paid because it was already paid? I mean, they voted not to pay that $819, and it's just paid because it was already sent out?
It was before my time.
Okay.
Sounds that long.
I don't know. Deanna, do you have an answer? Maybe you have, Deanna, you have to come into the mic.
Yeah. I mean, we talked a lot of.
Is it the one that was maybe in the mail? I can't remember.
The $819 that you're speaking of? When it says it was paid and then they voted not to pay? It was actually paid through the treasurer's office and mailed prior to it coming before the council to be approved. So at the meeting, they did initial and cross it off the register saying that that was going to be the one check they would not approve. And then they signed the check register minus $819. But they had been paid and sent out prior to being approved.
Is that just a dumb deal?
Well, if it was paid, that checks.
If it's paid, it's paid.
Yeah, that's. So those minutes and what ultimately happens with those Barnes and Thorgur invoices, we could get re-determined, it's a little confusing worth it wise, but prior to your time. And if that memorializes what happened at the meeting, it's sufficient.
Okay, then I can make a motion to approve these minutes. Second, any discretion?
Yeah, I'm still unclear. So nobody approved it that the pay ended. You know what it's worth of? I'm not on the same thing anyways, that we don't know what it's for. Or if it's not approved.
I think the issue here is that the invoice was paid without the council's approval. What the justification was or why, can't answer that. So as represented by Deanna, that check, that check was sent out. So approving whatever those minutes say, they're just memorializing the discussion that was had at that meeting. You're not accepting what was done at that meeting. The council voted as it did, made the donations that it did. But that check was sent. I mentioned that would be addressed on a different day or different time. But with regard to these minutes, they're accurate in terms of the representation.
And I believe, Deanna, you did mention at that meeting that you weren't sure if that check had been sent or not. So then when you checked it, it had been sent. So no matter what they said, you know, it had been sent out.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, so I think we have a second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Joyce Schmidt?
Yes.
Any rankings?
Yes.
JDH?
Yes.
Shannon Wojcik?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
I'm sorry, did you just have that problem just being at home? But what is the motion for? We're not making any change.
To approve the minutes.
Oh, to approve that, okay. Sorry. I was. Thanks, yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the year-end council meeting, December 28th? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Meg, you want to make roll call vote?
Joyce Schmidt?
Yes.
Any rankings?
Yes.
JDH?
Yes.
Shannon Wojcik?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to do something a little different this year. We're going to put public comments at the beginning of the meetings. We hope to have the agenda ready for everybody to see by Thursday before the meeting. So if you have any comments about any agenda items, now is the time. We're going to open public comments, and we're going to limit comments to three minutes. So if anyone has a comment in the audience?
Derek Dennis, I'm ready to go.
I'll have the camera set. Okay, I told them three minutes.
Name an address when you step on, please.
Yes, I've mentioned.
Right to the microphone, please.
Mr. Fisher?
We've had enough.
Okay, 2020 Golden Gate Drive, Long Beach, New York, 46360. Everybody?
Just make sure you can turn on the microphone.
Sure. Yeah.
Address.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, great. Mitch Taylor, 2020 Golden Gate Drive, Long Beach, New York, 46360, Stop 20. I was recently in Rolling Stones magazine, USA Today, a number of other publications. Fox 32 Chicago, news media broadcast across the country. I was framed, it was alleged I stalked Taylor Swift, and I had sent her threatening messages on Instagram from an Instagram account that did not even belong to me. I was framed, I was detained for over six months. It was a travesty of justice, what's happening in this country. The Eighth Amendment says excessive bail shall not be required. The purpose of bail is to attain release. It's not so, bail be set just out of reach of the accused, and you cannot be released. I'm a presidential candidate, I'm a TV host, I'm a published author, I'm an award-winning political filmmaker. I mean, this is totally saying travesty of justice that I was detained for over six months for this and released. I've got case log where detainment is over a million dollars a day. I need to file a lawsuit, I need to sue. I would like support from town council. Everybody in Long Beach, if we have any lawyers here, anybody who would like to help me sue, that'd be great. If you know any lawyers, let me know. Mitch and Taylor Swift, you can Google it. I've got a YouTube channel, if you're a buddy, check it out. Everybody? All right, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right.
Any more public comments from the audience? Don?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow, congratulations. Sorry, it's a little late, I'm missing the Skyway's backup. Getting here, I just want to say. We all know you, but can you give us your name? Don Capron, Stop 21. Thank you. I've been here since 1956, okay? I get it, really. A lot of things are happening right now to our country. I was in Gaza, I think I brought that up to people before. And when I was there, there was a complaint made against me because I put on my yard assignment since I'm for these people and not for that person. And I found out from the illustrious Lapeur election division, by my remaining, gone papers, went all over. So who knows where our information is. But I want to thank the members of the town of Long Beach, they paid my $250 fine. So I guess that rule has changed, you can't pay the state with non-property, not for that list, okay? So anyway, I just want to say, we used to have boards here. Think it was like, you might remember, like 30 years ago, they changed the rules here. So each one of you would represent a certain part of Long Beach, so we could go here. We had a problem with this, so now it's just like all over. So I just want to say to you, if you don't agree with us, like about the dear, the things that we're going to talk about, please be open-minded to all of us here, not just who your friends are or who your friends aren't, okay? Just try to be open-minded, because it will actually do the same thing when you go forward. Because we have some things we have to wrestle. And I appreciate the fact that my dear friend that I grew up with is now council, county council president, and vice president. So and to all of you, thank you. I did get to talk to JDH before the election, and I got to know a little bit about you that I didn't know about. So the more we learn about you and what your feelings are, I appreciate that, okay? So that's what I came to say, thank you. Thank you, Don. Any more public comments from the audience? Any public comments on Zoom?
30 people on Zoom.
Anybody wants to make a comment on Zoom? Can you raise your hand? Or just unmute yourself? Okay, I don't think we have any. We'll move on to committee reports. The police department's, Commission Chief Swistec?
Good evening, everyone. For the month of December of 2023, the Long Beach Police Department responded to 201 calls for service when compared to 212 in the previous year for a slight decrease of 11 calls for service. During the month of December, 12 incident reports were documented. A total of 10 individuals were arrested. In summary, four misdemeanor arrests for operating motor vehicle while intoxicated. Two felony arrests for operating motor vehicle while intoxicated. There was also a traffic-related misdemeanor arrest for never receiving a driver's license. One misdemeanor arrest for reckless driving. And a misdemeanor battery warrant arrest, which is related to a road rage incident on Lake Shore Drive. Overall, it was a very mild month with no major concerns to pass law. The police commission did not meet in the month of December. And Madam President, if you would like, I can move on to the town administrative report.
Please do.
Reference to town administration, just want to make everyone aware that the Lake Shore Drive Water Service Improvement project is now underway, started last week. We had a pre-construction meeting today. That project will last for a minimum of the next 30 days. This is a water improvement project to nearly 140 tons, starting from stop 13 to stop 31. The majority of the work will be completed in the next four to six weeks. We will then also be coming back, the contractor will winter up the suns in the spring with some restoration work to revitalize some landscaping, put some grass, you didn't see them, things of that nature. The stormwater improvement project, you will be seeing that probably not until the latter part of February, the first week of March. So we'll be talking about this each month, just to give the word out there, that that project specifically will affect the interest from the neighborhoods of stop 16 to roughly stop 19. There'll be some road closures. Look to the town website for road closures. And we will also be emailing the residents affected along the Lake Shore Drive quarter, reference that. Capital projects for 2024, we will be working with the various department heads to verify their needs for capital improvements, either if it's a vehicle, a piece of equipment, or some changes on their department. We will get those capital projects coded out. The capital projects will then, the major ones will return to the council unless the council decides otherwise. Our previous intent has always been to bring the capital improvement projects forward at the monthly meetings so that we have full transparency to our Long Beach residents, and you get to see where some improvements in town are being made, and then the costs associated to those. I would like to thank Paul Fendez of Lawson, who is present with us tonight. Paul, as a Long Beach resident, reached out to me last year, offered his services to the Long Beach community to assist us with some of our audio/video needs. We want to improve the quality of our Zoom meetings here in the town council room. Paul with us tonight, he met with me last week. We went through this particular room and also the new meeting room in the public safety building. Paul has already sent a schematic drawing to my office, kind of indicated some of the things we need to think about as we're finishing construction at the new building. He is also working on some audio/video components that will assist us in better quality for both the audio and video in the future. So Paul, thank you for that. Appreciate all that being done and no cost to the community, it's just his way of giving back to us. So thank you for that. Town website, I was notified a couple of weeks ago that we are in the group of websites that will be upgraded, Pacific Plus, in the first six months of 2024. So we look forward to changes to our current website. Our intent is for the town to get a postcard out to all residents, informing them of the website update, and also encouraging all of our residents to sign up through the online portal on the website for email notifications, whether it's related to a road closure, meeting minutes, town newsletters, whatever we send out from either the clerk's office or another town department. We'll be giving that information out to everyone, hopefully sometime here in the first or second quarter of this year. Aside from that, unless there's any questions, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Volunteer fire department?
Good evening. On behalf of the men and women of the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department, congratulations on your new appointment as town council members. We look forward to working very closely with you as we continue to provide fire support as well as medical support to the community. For the year 2023, we finished the year with 167 total calls versus 155 a year earlier. So about a 7% increase in calls overall. We are significantly higher on the fire side, 75 calls during the year versus 57 a year ago. So about 24% higher in the fire call. We're about even on the medical calls for the year. We did 92 medical calls last year versus 98 a year before. As Chief Swistec mentioned, December was a mild month, it was a mild month for fire calls as well. We responded to eight calls during the month of December, four on the fire side and four on the medical side. Our average call times for a fire call, we are on scene within 4.4 minutes for every fire call. For every medical call, we're on scene between 4.3 minutes. Fire calls, we average seven members on every call, whether it's a basic alarm call or a smell of smoke or just a false alarm. Medical calls, we average five members to each medical call and continue to do that. We, as a volunteer hours that we provided to the community, we've logged over 2,700 hours of volunteer service to the town of Long Beach and no charge. Couple things, just reminders, as many of you know, the volunteer fire department has set up an ice rink every year. You may have noticed the ice rink is not out there. It's primarily due to mother nature. We continue to monitor the weather all through late November, throughout December. It's the justification for bringing the effort into doing it just wasn't there. I don't believe we're going to do an ice rink this year, so those that are looking for it, I don't think the weather is going to be conducive to a long-term freeze, even though it's going to be really cold next week, and people will say, where's my ice rink? The ice wouldn't be melted, it wouldn't be there. Wanted to address that point. Speaking of ice, it is getting cold. We will be putting up our do not walk on the ice signs shortly. Our volunteer fire department does that every year. I know there's no shelf ice on the lake right now, but a reminder to the community is, should that shelf ice get out there, please stay off of it. It's very enticing for people to go out there, but it's very dangerous. And it's going to be very difficult for not only the volunteer fire department to save people else at the cop store or anybody else. So please be mindful of the signs about adult and ice, and certainly stay off the shelf ice. Last reminder, there are a lot of people away during this time of year. We do get fire alarms many times in the middle of night, and we're always looking for a key holder to those homes. If you know you're going to be away, and you can get a neighbor a key or get to the police department a key, that would be very helpful. Otherwise, fire department's going to find a way into your house that we're probably not going to like. But if we get called by a 911 and we can't get into your house, we're going to find a way in there. So just a reminder to have key holders. That's what I have for the report for the volunteer fire department, any questions? Fire commission did not meet during the month of December, and I believe we probably need to discuss fire commission numbers going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Public works?
Public works did not meet for the month of December. John, did you want to add it?
Yes. I don't know if I have any fish or if I have to get that.
You have to stand up and talk into my stuff. Please read your name.
I used to sit on my keys. So I'm not sure what you're doing with public works. I'd be more than happy to serve. Mark has given you quite a bit of information about a couple of projects. I would just second what he said. The water service project is in, in the works right now. Waters been doing a fantastic job getting started. We hope to shrink the duration of that project considerably from what the original plan was, which is fantastic. As you all know, or if you don't know, they're working on the east end, they're down in stop 25 to 28 right now. And they'll start working toward the west once they complete that east end. We had our pre-construction meeting today at Austin Engineering, which I mentioned to you, so that project is doing really well. The public works is involved in a number of projects this year. So we have the water service project that Mark mentioned, we have stop 17, which is another project that's going to kick off hopefully right around March 1st. We got a little bit more input today from the engineer. We've got a couple more decisions to make, but essentially Waters chopping up a bit, ready to go around March 1st. That is the stop 17 drainage improvement project. We also have the CCMG projects that we do around here, which are paving. That's a 75% funded by the state, and then we have to come up with 25% in the engineering costs. So we intend, the town administrator, myself, if you so choose to keep me involved, public works, we'll be meeting with the engineer. We've had some preliminary discussions about what we want to do to move forward. Some of that's based on affordability, and others is based on progression of other projects. For instance, Lake Shore Drive needs to be resurfaced, but we would like to do the drainage work involved in that area, all the way from, you know, one end of town to the other, before we pave it so that we're not, you know, tearing it up after we do that. So Mark talks to department heads about what they need in terms of things like the community center. I know you met with them today, I'm not sure if you went over some of the things they need for capital, but the HVAC system needs some improvements. So depending on how you want to structure all this, Mark will be doing a lot of the administrative work. The public works committee then generally rides heard over what the street department's doing and what the water department's doing in addition to capital projects. The capital plan in terms of budget finance then is orchestrated around the input from all those individuals. And Mark's doing a great job of handling that. So however you want to structure this in the future, it's totally up to you.
Okay, we're planning on rolling the stormwater committee into the public works committee. Do you see a problem with that?
No, not at all. I think that's a wise choice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, so. Your thoughts?
So probably should have to be in ordinance at some point.
Okay. Park board did not meet December, their next meeting will be the Tuesday in January at 6 o'clock right here in this room. The community center met a little earlier today, and I'll give you the highlights. We met with a possible renter for room eight, the mushroom coffee guy, very interesting. And we're still talking to him, we've got other possibilities for, that might not have room eight. So we're working on that. We discussed the kitchen, we're going to get the board of health in to tell us what we can and can't do in that kitchen, and supposedly you can prepare food in there, but you can dish out food from there, but you can't prepare it there. So we'll talk to the board of health about that. We're working on getting some master keys for Chief Swistec. Chief told us they started upgrading the security cameras at the community center, so that's a plus. And we're looking into women's bathroom upgrades. That's all. Budget and findings, Meg?
Budget and findings did not meet in January yet. The 2024 budget was inputted to the comm system at the end of December. It starts annual monthly meetings after appointments are made, we're resupped in February. And if Carl, Senator's on line, he has anything to add? Financial, otherwise?
Yes, I'm here, I don't really have anything else to add at this time. So I think there's been a lot of year-end work to be done, but the annual financial report as well as the W2's payroll tax returns and all that will need to be done. But overall, I think we're moving forward, I think we're pretty caught up today.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you, Meg. Human resources?
HR did not meet due to a lack of a forum. We'll have to, obviously, tonight, committee appointments, re-establish that committee, but no report.
Okay, tree board, Ellen?
Ellen, your name is correct. Yes. Thank you. I'm the chairman, we bring evidence too. We did not meet this month, and we now have assigned ordinance, and then I think moving forward, we're going to try to get a, one sheet, like cheat sheet to the tree board ordinance that can be handed out with building permits and any kind of landscaping permits that go out. So, you know, we'll start learning about the rules of not cutting trees down on town property. So, or at least we can say that they've been normalized. And we'll be meeting in February.
Thank you. I think that sounds like a great idea. Building commission, I don't think they've met since the last council meeting. The next meeting is Friday at 1:00 PM, so I think the report was already given on that. The BZA is meeting tomorrow, they only have one agenda item, the continuation of public hearing for 3007 Long Beach Way. Any other, anything else we should know about that?
Oh, that's it.
Okay. APC?
Did not meet.
Did not meet. Things are looking better than they were. So my DJ packed on. Building permit, revenue report?
This is for the remaining November 2023. There are five permits totaling $30,647. And all of the December 2023, seven permits totaling $307,362,000, with total revenue on all of $4166. There are four electric permits issued in December totaling $1,026, one in no charge, and one streetcar permit with revenue of $100. Legal expenses paid in December were $5,062.50 to Bridge and Nelson James. Accounting charges paid were $7,799.6 to Senator Dalton Ross D. And with that, I'll obtain a motion to approve all the committee reports.
Motion to approve all the committee reports. Do we have a second?
Second.
Meg, you want to do a roll call?
Josh Smith?
Yes.
Anita Remiges?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Shannon Lojek?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Unfinished business. We have the public safety building progress update.
The council's been receiving the weekly updates that are sent out every Friday. To date, the groundworks have been installed. All the window glazing is currently installed. The building itself is pretty much on schedule for completion sometime this May. We're hopeful to have the building completed. We should have heat in the building later this week. Drywall, I'm sorry. It's on site. The heating is open. Great. I think that puts it out. Wonderful. So, the heat is on this today. We'll have drywall going up in the next three weeks. Before you tonight, we have an electrical change order and also a change order for a door, the door netting. We'll speak about those here shortly. The logos have been installed on both the south side and the west side of the building, and the interior wall, and the metal studs on all the interior walls are probably 75% completed at this time, and overall, there are no any concerns at the project. Very happy. And we now have a key to the building. The building is secure, and we've provided a temporary key to the building.
Thank you, Chief. MS4 ordinance, which is a stormwater ordinance, and I know it was sent from building commission, I thought, to the APC?
No, it was sent to the council. Larry and I are still working on it. The bones of it are done. So, the former council pushed it over. We need to have it placed by April. There's a current draft done, and it's based on the model ordinance that was prepared for use statewide by Purdue. What Larry and I are cross-referencing now is to make sure that it fits in the current town code, as some of you have found for me to review, just making sure that it reconciles, and there may be one section that we need to supersede as part of the ordinance. So, that'll be ready in final form. I talked to Larry today, so he's finishing up his review. So, we get out plenty of time for February, and then you'll have a few meetings that you can consider it.
Okay.
It's pretty voluminous, I will say. There's a little bit going forward. There isn't much that's optional. We need to have it in place.
Seems fairly complicated.
It's a lot.
Okay. Thank you. The stock 15 ADA grant. I think we're all ready to go, except we still need that canceled check, Meg. Did you get that email? Can't see Meg.
Did you send it today?
No, it was sent by Jeff Altman's to you and Trista, and the one piece they need is a canceled check, and I think from the State Board of Accounts or something. I have to look back and look at the email, but he wanted it tomorrow.
All right. I will get to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Joy, do I have a question on that?
Yes.
It's documented here that, and again, this goes back to 2019, about an allocation of $150,000 for, I would assume, this coastal program?
The 150?
For the project.
$150,000?
Yeah, it says, "Lastly, the council resolution to allocate 150 for the project could be similar to what was done."
Right. We had to supply the letter to the grant people saying that we have the matching money, to verify that we had the matching money before they'll even.
Be allocated next year.
Right. Right.
For 2025.
Right.
Okay. So, it's not been allocated as of 2019? We're not sitting on that line?
No, no. It hasn't been allocated at all of that, and we'll have to work it into the 2025 budget.
Okay. And where do you see this being bucketed into? Is this a Parks and Recs? Is this a?
Parks and Recs has paid for all of the engineering. They'll still, they still have the $125,000 to pay for the engineering. Parks and Recs is going to pay for the parking space, because that will not be included in the grant, and then the town will be responsible for the 150.
But the budget and finance committee needs to allocate $150,000 as a part of this for 2025.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Lake Shore Sewer LLC, the private sewer agreement. I've gone over this agreement, and I honestly don't feel comfortable talking about it without Kendra here, but I will say, I have not seen a sewer agreement with the Michigan City Sanitary District or a sign off in the Michigan City Common Council, and that's in the state code. That's the very first thing they're supposed to have.
I'm speaking from recollection and by chance, overlap in meetings. They have been through the process and improve, but that will be part of, regardless of matter what happens, as Michigan City's requirements as well, because they did sign, you know, their city, the Michigan City's making residents who tap into the city services, waive their remonstrance rights, et cetera. But no matter what, my suggestion is that, I know that the previous council or some members had some comments to offer and share that probably not right to pass. Obviously, it's your pleasure, whether you're prepared to do that, but I would suggest that we find a way to accumulate some comments or point water, more members that I can work with, that we can put a response together for attorney Lojek. So, this is first crack at it. It's the first draft after we talked some months ago about some basics. We met with some officials from the town and myself, the other side, so.
Okay. I would say that Kendra and maybe Shannon have done some extensive research on this, so I would ask that maybe Kendra, can you get together with Chris?
Yeah.
Shannon? Yeah, I think Kendra has done an excellent job already outlining some things, Chris, we can share with you.
Yeah, then no matter what, obviously, share with the council, and then when everybody decide to bring it back, we'll reset the response.
Yeah, one clarification is, what I was unable to determine is what our obligation is here. Is that if even the private parties that are part of our community suggest that they want to do this, I couldn't find anything. And Kendra, your research was fantastic, which took me to other places within code to do further research, but I still, it's unclear to me if I could, if the council would clarify, what is our obligation here?
Well, we can make sure that we provide the legal basis of whether you have any, or whether it's just the town, I'll look into it, so we are, for lack of a better description, or, you know, sign on the future of the more, more of the system that's throughout the town allows, you know, more opportunity to do in the future. So, I will give you, you don't have an obligation, as we sit here, but I'll provide you with some legal authority to show what is or isn't, as an advice on this project in terms of the statutory scheme.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that, because right now, this is a lot of work for a lot of people, which is our job and what we signed up to do, but it's very important, I think, for us to know what we have to do.
Then just to give you a little more background, I think that we're as far along as we are. This private group approached the town some time ago. They asked for legal faith, or, you know, a gesture of good faith, but first of all, through Austin Associates, of whether the town would be metal, which is such an idea. The response from that council was yes. So, then they move forward. And again, it doesn't mean that you're responsible, or that you have an obligation, but that they went through and did the planning and spent and did the engineering, but you're entitled, and your charge is to protect the town, right? So, you know, you have some residents that want to move forward and have expended a lot of funds, but we'll make sure that the town is protected first and foremost.
Yeah. Again, the last council was amenable to the proposal, but in no way obligated the town to do anything.
No, there's no agreement.
Thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? Okay, new business. Sergeant James G. Schooly announces retirement at 27 years.
Our chief deputy marshal, James Schooly, has submitted his retirement notice, and I'd like to take the opportunity to read the email that I received on Wednesday, January 3rd. Chief, please allow this email to serve as my notice of intent to retire from the Long Beach Police Department. My last shift day will be Tuesday, February 6th. I will then use my 32 shift days of PTO, and will vacation out with my last day being Wednesday, April 10th, barring any changes. As per our discussion, I will assist in any way that I can to ensure a smooth transition, including hiring a new deputy and offering input under new chief deputy. We have a great group of people protecting the town, and it's been a privilege to serve roughly 30 years as a dispatcher, reserve deputy, deputy, and chief deputy. I thank you for your kind words and support. It has been a pleasure working with you. Chief Deputy Schooly has done an exceptional job for us. He handles our daily operations, assists with the overall running of the police department. He's kind of my right-hand deputy to assist with all the major day-to-day things, so he will be dearly missed. I've known Jim for over 32 years now, and he's a very professional, exceptional office officer, and a community's losing a good one. But we wish him the very best in his retirement, and my intent is, because he's very shy when it comes to public speaking, to ask, try and get him here in April, for the April town council meeting, so we can all say goodbye to him in April. So, with that, I would ask for a motion from the council to allow my office to move forward with the hiring process of a new deputy marshal. This would be a probationary deputy marshal that would serve on probation for a period of one year. Prior to making the appointment to deputy marshal, I will return to the council with the information related to the deputy marshal to seek your input and your authorization before moving forward with hiring the new individual. I would hope to have someone hired just prior to the departure of Deputy Chief Schooly. A lot of that is up to the applicant pool that we receive. Currently, we have received a few applications and look forward to receiving more. If you know of anybody that is interested, please have them contact my office. So, with that, ask for a motion to allow us to move forward with the hiring process.
I'll make that motion. Second, any discussion? Meg, you want to take a roll call?
Josh Smith?
Yes.
Anita Remiges?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Aye.
Shannon Lojek?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yes.
Before I move on, while we're still on the police topic, I would just like to take a moment. I see that you appeared at tonight's meeting, and in the corner there, we have our number nine deputies, Deputy Mitchell Sykes. Mitchell's been with us coming on about five years now. Just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce him to the newly-elected council and some residents that are present here tonight. Mitch does an exceptional job for us. In fact, over the most recent holiday, I was on vacation right after Christmas, I received a call from a family member who had a medical call to their home in early morning hours, and it was dealing with two elderly residents. The male resident was struggling with some health issues. The wife was obviously distraught because of her spouse. Deputy Sykes went above and beyond, followed the ambulance out to the hospital, took the wife to the hospital, stayed with her, made sure family was contacted, did an exceptional job, showing great empathy that night. So, Mitchell, thank you for that. And like I said, the family reached out to me and wanted to share their grant to the veteran that Mitchell did that night. So, thank you again, Mitch.
Thank you. Okay. Clerk Treger benefits life insurance.
Our previous clerk Treger received family medical health benefits from the town at the cost of approximately $17,000 a year, and also was provided a life insurance benefit from the town that was at a cost of approximately $812.40 annually. I've had the opportunity to speak with our new clerk, Clerk Collins. She will not need health care for her nor her family, which is a savings of about $17,000 to the town, and I would recommend and ask for a motion that we allow Clerk Collins to be on the policy for the life insurance for the accidental death for the sum of approximately $812.40 annually, which is $67.70 a month. That would be my expectation to issue to the council.
I'll make that motion. Second, any discussion?
Clerk Collins?
Yes.
Anita Remiges?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Shannon Lojek?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to committee appointments. Everybody up here got, I hope, a copy of current committees and possible changes, so I'm just going to go through these one at a time. We're going to start with the BZA. Doug Wickstrom and Meg Canier have agreed to stay on through the current business. You think that will be done February or March?
I would say February, later.
Okay. We do have, for a presidential appointment, not from the APC, Charlie Goodall. He's going to be replacing Meg Canier. He, Meg is going to stay until the business is done, but he'll start zooming the meetings. And Doug's term is up. He had, Doug Wickstrom, he had initially agreed to stay another year, but he would really prefer not to. So, he'll stay until we find a replacement for him, so we'll be looking for one person for the BZA. We have the building commission. We'll replace, we have to replace council members, all council members. So, Anita Remiges will be replacing John Coker. I'm already on the building commission, but I'll be switching spots with Bob, Dr. Lemay. I'll become a council member and the liaison to the BZA and council, and Bob Lemay will stay on as a citizen member. So, the rest of the committee will be Anita Remiges, Joyce Schmidt, Larry Wall, Joe John, Dr. Lemay, Ken Klausner, Pete Byways. The APC, the council, we need council replacements for McFen, Lemay, and Chimestone. Those will be Anita Remiges, Kendra Marklet, and Meg Collins. They'll all have four-year terms through 2027. We have a presidential appointment, Matt Karstan. He's on there through 2024. A presidential appointment that should have been on the BZA, I think, but Chris and I haven't talked about that. Jim Deener, he's got a three-year term through 2024, and a presidential appointment set upon, he's through 2024. So, we're looking for one BZA member to replace. Doug Beeler, his four-year term is up, was up in December.
Can I make a comment on that, just a question?
Yeah.
Given we're in one-year terms, how will the four-year term work for the appointment of you, Kendra, and Meg?
Then someone, if I'm not elected, whoever you put on, whoever they put on to replace me will finish my term.
Okay. So, if our next council would have a three-year term then?
Right. The next council person that, say Anita doesn't get elected, whoever takes her term will be through 2027.
Okay. And then they can do one second four-year term?
Or they can hold over.
Yep.
Hold over until someone, because the way that current code is written with the term limits, that even if that were applicable, there is some areas, if there's not a point that would be in place for that. So, finishing out or robbing out that one year is possible.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to say, since we're all new, we're trying to make as few changes as possible, because all the work is done at the committees, and we understand that, and they all have ongoing business. So, we're trying to do as disruptive, as little disruption as possible. Police Commission. We have Chief Swistec. That's by ordinance. Council member by president. Shannon Lojek's going to replace John Wall. John Coker has agreed to remain as a citizen by the president, and I believe we'll have one opening on the police commission. one opening on the police commission, depending on the status of Bob McFadden. But so far, all the committees we've talked about will have a quorum going forward until we make the replacements. Public Works and Safety, Kendra Bartlett will be replacing McFadden as council member. Ernie Summers has asked to go off this committee. I think nine people on a committee is a lot, personally.
If I could add, Madam President, the previous council did discuss the Public Works Committee about reducing the number through attrition over the years as they drop off. So I think you're right on path, that was the thoughts of the previous council. They just did not want to force anybody off previously, so it would be at your discretion.
I agree with that. I have decreased through attrition on my list. So this will now become an eight-person committee and we would ask that John Wall be the liaison for the storm drainage projects. So this committee will be Kendra Bartlett, Rick Remigius, John Wall, Laurel Kaczynski, Scott Pope, Don Reinicki, our street superintendent Tom Dolph, and our water superintendent Rick Fire commission. We've got the chief, which is Tom Youngs, and Kurt Ernst. Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department by president, that's going to remain John Wall. The two council members will be replacing Coker and Johnstone will be Shannon Wojcicki and Joyce Schmidt. And then there is a fire commission member, Rick Luterbach is on there. I don't know if, that was a member appointed by the fire commission.
He's not been on for long.
He's not been on for long. Okay, so the fire commission will need to appoint another member for that one. Park board, three of us are going off of the park boards. We've been really lucky, we received four really good residents for park board members. Unfortunately, one turned out not to be a resident and a permanent resident and we have a residency requirement for the park board. So, but the other three, I don't know how we could, on what grounds we could deny any of them, so I would, and these are all council appointments, so I would make a motion that we appoint Paul Walzak as the four-year term through 2027, David Hoppy for a two-year term through 2025, and Cindy Levy for a two-year term through 2025, and then Zach Knapp is the current president.
I would second your motion.
Any discussion?
Clerk Callow?
Yes.
Anita Ronges?
Yes.
J.D. Haley?
Aye.
Shannon Wojcicki?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yes. Joyce, can I just, we need to make a motion to officially put Charlie Goodall for the APC, for the BZA, Charlie. I don't, we didn't vote on him.
It's a presidential appointment.
Oh, sorry.
Don't stand on my toes already.
Bring up appointments, it is a question, and have, are all of those that you've raised presidential appointments that?
Except for parks.
Okay, because otherwise I would just say a blanket motion with these appointments would be appropriate if there's anything that's outside of that.
Maybe Joyce is having fun doing this.
A budget and finance committee. We've got Meg replacing, taking the clerk's position. J.D. Haley is going to take Mike Johnstone's position. Anita Remigius is going to take John Wall's position and the other two on the committee are Laurel Kaczynski and Joe Jobman. That completes that committee. The police advisory board, I talked to the chief about this, I think we should abolish the police advisory board or, I don't think they end the meet.
Just to kind of add to that discussion, typically the police advisory board was established some years ago to assist with any citizen-related complaints. Those complaints can be handled at the police commission level, so there's really no difference between the two boards. Thankfully, as discussed earlier, I'm very blessed to have an exceptional staff, so it's not like complaints rolling in left and right either, but it is there for a purpose. I would say the police commission could handle the status of the advisory board.
So if we take the ordinance, because that is something that is established, I know you have others that are just kind of appeared, but this is one that is organized by ordinance, so there have to be an ordinance to abolish that.
Okay, so how do we start that process?
You collectively give me direction.
Okay, will you abolish that?
I will bear a word this many for February.
Okay, thank you. Human resources. Meg, the clerk is on this, she'll be replacing Clerk Perry. Chief Swissdeck is on this committee. J.D. Haley will be replacing Mary McFadden. George Hadacantus on this and Mike Konicek, this is a presidential appointment, I would like to make Mike Konicek on the committee replacing Mary O'Neil. I thank Mary for her participation and I would like to welcome Mike Ward. He's been on the committee before and he has a lot of experience in HR, that's what he did, you know, for his career. Does anybody have a problem with that? Thrilled. Okay, community center, this is an annual advisory, all by council. This is, I want to point out, this is a working committee. They do the building maintenance, they take care of the tenants, and they take care of scheduling. Five people on this committee, Joe Jobman, Doug Wickstrom, Larry Brown, I think they will remain. Melanie Davis has resigned and I will be going off the committee, so there are two openings. I don't know how you guys feel, there's been talk of forming another arm of this committee that does more fundraising or that kind of thing. But this particular committee, there are a couple of gentlemen that have been interested in coming on this committee and I think they would fit in really well, but I don't want to ask them unless the council is okay with it, because we've asked one of them once before and then they put someone else on the committee, I don't want to do that again.
I do know that one of the gentlemen who's been asked, and he's an excellent choice, he's a worker and that's what they need is, is help sometimes to get into the building, things to do in the building. Many times they refer to it as janitorial and it sometimes is, it's getting a key, letting people in, you know, I mean, last year the cooler water, the cooler went down and there was a lot of research to be done on that, so. I know the one gentleman is here and I would be thrilled.
So this is a council appointment. If you guys are okay with those two gentlemen, I mean, I would suggest for this other committee, Shannon, like you and Kendra could maybe get together with the current committee and see how you could branch off of that?
Well, that's, my comment was going to be, can we not maybe bring some of the fundraising or some of the, let's call it, into the same committee? Do we have to create a new committee just to do fundraising activities that are surrounding that of the community center?
I don't think we would have to make another committee, but I don't see any of the people on this committee doing any fundraising.
But we could grow this committee, right? I mean, add one or two people to this current that may be involved in it without having to, again, create an ordinance to create a new committee.
Hang on a sec, the community center is not, is not a committee driven by ordinance?
No.
Right, it's just an organization at an organizational level here, right?
Right, it's really a janitorial committee.
Yeah, is, is, to the extent that creating another ad hoc committee that does fundraising to benefit the community center, right, is?
Oh, use the microphone, please.
Generating, having another committee that is in benefit to raise funds for the community center doesn't require another ordinance, it requires us saying, yes, a bunch of people want to get together and help out in that specific manner. Yes?
If that's how you want to run with that, the difference with booster club, not to add more red tape, is that something you may, may want to do? Maybe you want it to be separate, it's something that isn't part of the town but feeds it, so I think there's some options there. My suggestion is?
Well, on that point, though, we have a civic association, so I don't want to really peel off and create something else. And that's why this is more catered towards really helping us improve what needs to be improved at the community center. Right, so it's not income that goes anywhere in the town, it goes towards what the community centers need. So that's why I just wondered if it couldn't be part of that one already established.
So?
Advisory.
Go ahead, Kendra. Sorry, zoom lag. I've had some discussions with interested community residents already and I've found some good people. I think we could really, we've got some good vision already out there and I think it does need to be a separate committee, whether that be official on ordinance side, purely because be handling money and the lack of money will be bringing in. And, I mean, we're not hoping to raise like $20,000, because we're working to raise one, two million, I mean, over a long time. So it's going to be a big, a big job, a lot of talent, people are going to be needed, it's going to be a long-term goal, longer group of people. It's going to take a lot of people to be on the committee, a lot more than just two to replace like Natalie and Joy. I mean, at least, you know, five or six really hardworking, talented people that don't have fundraisers to get this done. So I would up the mindset, keep it the way it is, with minds and it's done settling, the works, how we're running the community center right now, working with the vibe, you know, all the issues, they know what's going on with the HVAC, all that stuff. And then this new committee would work with them to find out what are, if there's a need a goal, what's kind of the plan going forward. But I kind of envision is that we do need a separate committee now, whether, since it is going to be asking people for substantial money, we might be more legitimate than just a booster club with our names on it, you know, achieve the town, you know, we might do that to be more official, Chris writing some sort of new committee members, first committee orders, but I do see it as something that we could use, whether it be community center fundraising with a little bit of, you know, side projects, a little bit of duplication here and there with design or something like that, with funds, but really, really putting that community center into the ground that it should be with, with a lot, a lot more than it would take for this to be, we're going to the current committee and going for meeting once a month. I mean, it needs to be a full separate.
Kendra, Kendra, if I may interrupt you, I'm in agreement with you, these are two different skill sets in, into the context of we're talking about the dollars that you're talking about and it takes a life onto itself when you're talking six figures, seven figures, et cetera. And perhaps we should leave that to a different question, back to Joyce, the committee that we're talking about here of really being, the focus of it being maintenance-oriented? Should we address that question first? Should we go back to that question and end these people?
Sure.
What's the question?
There's two, there's two people that, there's two people who are, who are wanting to volunteer to whom, I'm not sure who they are.
Well, one's here, Mike Palowski.
Okay.
I mean Jim, sorry, the other guy's named Mike. So Jim Palowski and Mike Quinlan, and I haven't even talked to Jim.
Jim, you're on the spot.
Your client, thank you first.
Okay, thank you, Jim. So the other guy is Mike Quinlan. I don't know him, but he's expressed interest to the other committee members that he would like to participate, he's a retired gentleman and he likes to get involved in maintenance.
Ooh.
So I would make a motion to approve Mike Quinlan and then we still need one more community center person.
I would second your motion on Mike Quinlan.
Any discussion?
Clerk Callow?
Yes.
Anita Ronges?
Yes.
J.D. Haley?
Yes.
Shannon Wojcicki?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yes.
Okay, NERC seat, which is an advisory, one elected official by council, it's going to be J.D. Haley. Thank you, J.D.
Thank you.
Tree board, all by council. I don't, I haven't heard that anyone wants to leave, I would suggest leaving that committee as-is.
I haven't heard anyone wanting to leave, so.
Okay.
The chairman's still there.
Okay, thank you. In the stormwater, we're going to try to roll into the other committee. And so Kendra, you're going to somehow work on this, forming this new committee? You and Shannon and J.D. or whatever? Okay.
Yeah.
So we have a one-year term on the APC, which we're trying to fill. We have a, let's see. We have BZA, we're going to have a four-year term on the BZA. We have a one-year term on the APC. We're going to have a opening on the police commission. There's an annual opening on the fire commission, but that is appointed by the fire commission, so we don't have to do that and by council, the two annual communities, but now we only need one. So we don't really have that many openings and I think everyone will have a quorum to move forward.
And Joyce, did you want the stormwater board, Chris to generate an ordinance to dissolve that as well?
Yes.
And absorb it into the now eight-person Public Works and Safety?
Yes.
I think she asked him to do that.
Yeah, we'd asked him to do that already.
What about grant-arty committee, did you want to talk about that tonight?
We discussed that, I, I think that could be a future discussion, I mean, I think we need more of a grant-searching committee than a grant-ear, because.
Grant-searching, right.
I'm going to discuss that. Okay, any more questions on committees? Okay, term limit ordinance, this is term limits for committees. I would make a motion that we repeal this ordinance, I think it just adds another level of difficulty to finding committee members and I don't think in any way it fulfills the purpose and intent. So I'm open to any discussion on this.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion that we abolish it.
I would second the motion.
Any discussion?
But just want to remind you that I would also take an ordinance going forward that can have ready for February if that was your inclination.
Which again, to clarify, there's a public hearing component.
On this part, no, not everything requires a public hearing, you're welcome at any time, if that's your pleasure, to have public comment during some of these, there are only budget time, some BZA changing zoning codes, there are certain things that require a public hearing. One of the benefits is, as you mentioned earlier, having your agenda out sooner, having things posted, we get, this is one, that we can have done relatively quickly, so you can post it well in advance of your meeting so that the public is aware. You can always have public comment at any chance, so if you feel this is an important one, you can. So I just want to make sure we're using the same concept of public hearing.
Certainly, yeah, it just, from my point of view, as it went through a process of public hearing, is that if we're going to go through the process of repealing it, I think the community should have an opportunity to speak to it. But I am in agreement with the chair.
I would point out one other thing, procedurally, is normally you can't pass an ordinance at the town level on the first introduction, then at the same night it's introduced, so let's say we introduce it in February, unless the council unanimously agrees to do so and suspend the rules. So it's at least two, so there is a check and balance in there, so that the public, potentially, if you decide that, hey, I want to make sure the town, everybody has a chance to speak up and consider this, it could be a two-month process to do that, you could pass it in February as well, or you could decide to take public comments during it. And the reason I'm leaning into the use of public And the reason I'm leaning into the use of public hearing is, that's a process, and certain things require it, we have to publish notice and do that, but you can entertain those who want to speak in favor or against at any point, because as you said, passing ordinance is certainly takes some time and effort, different than changing the zoning code and all of those that are going through APC, because that's a lot of process, but you're welcome to do. And one of the other benefits is that you're having your public comment in front, so the public will be able to speak in advance of considering any of your ordinance as well.
I'm going to just ask again, just openly, this is form, talk through it, but how does it not benefit getting more people involved?
It only addresses four-year terms, first of all. The only committees we have with four-year terms are BZA and Park Board, everything else is annual. So you could have, it says, you could, you can only have two consecutive four-year terms, but you can have a four-year term, take a year off, and another four-year term, or you can have 21-year terms. It doesn't, the whole thing doesn't make any sense.
So possibly rewriting, because I like the fact that through the election of the three of you here to this, you know, we got three new people in the community that joined the Park Board, but had you not run for council and stayed on the Park Board, how do we get more people's involvement?
That's a council, that's a council approval, so the council could take, after their term is up, you don't have to reappoint that person. If you've got somebody else.
Right, I see, yeah.
So, well, believe me, the people who are on these things for that long, I don't think they want to be on them for that long.
But I think that's, I think that's an important thing in this process of going right through the discussion we just had about committee and board assignments, is that there's many, there's many assignments, like the budget financing, that is not by ordinance, that is not by number, is that if people want to get involved to have expertise as a CPA, CFA, MBA, who want to see how our community works with our money, please, volunteer. I think that is 100% Joy to your point.
Yeah, and I would encourage people to, all year long, to volunteer for committees, so we know when we get to this point, people that are interested.
I also just wanted to comment on this ordinance, that when the ordinance was first introduced, and it went through several variations, it was not a unanimous decision to pass this ordinance by any means. I don't recall there being any substantial public outcry at this. And I also recall that there was a council member who was fully committed to this ordinance, and it was difficult for that council person to even understand it, and he had drafted it and to apply it. So whether you get new people in, as Joy said, people are welcome, that's how I came to some committees, you just kind of show an interest of where your skill set lies. And I believe our town is always open to anybody who is willing and would like to get their name in, and that's how we've been able to come up with some names even tonight.
So, can we put that on your list? Thank you. Okay, next is, yeah, should we vote on to abolish it?
I don't, I don't think of that, since you really, I'm just giving me direction to prepare something, so there's no decision being made.
Oh, well, Deanna has a question.
Motion in a second to repeal.
Oh, so we have to.
Because you can't do that tonight, that's why.
So we just, we don't have a motion in a second now.
We take it that.
Rewind.
We're new. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, the Senator Dalton Agreement, 2024 Service Agreement with the Town of Long Beach and 2024 Advisory Agreement for Fire Truck Financing Purchase and Fire Station Remodeling Project. I read it.
I did too.
Yeah, I moved, I moved to adopt it as in form.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Deanna, wait, Deanna has a question.
There are two amendments.
Correct, the service agreement with the town is the first one on the agenda, Joy?
Yes.
That's what we're discussing?
Service agreement with the town, do that one first. Motion to approve and second it, any discussion?
Joy Scher?
Yes.
Any objections?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Shane Wolden?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett? Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the 2024 Advisory Agreement for Fire Truck Financing Purchase and Fire Station Remodeling Project?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Roll call, Joy Scher?
Yes.
Any objections?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Shane Wolden?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett? Yeah.
The Civic System License Agreement. May.
Yes, so currently with Civic, there are, with me coming on, replacing current, like, there are four people that go into the accounting software, the fifth is the accountant that helps, or the accounting firm who has access, that helps the town. Currently, all three people can be in the system at one time, so our office is asking for a fourth concurrent license for this cost per year. There are five named hosted users, but that's different than people that can be in the software at one time. So currently, if only, if three people are in and a fourth wants to get in, somebody has to get off, or someone gets kicked off, or we have to wait. If the accountant, for example, wants to get on, she has to wait until two p.m. when our water employee leaves for the day. So I don't know how, this is our one year term, I don't know if future will, so that's the information.
Is an investment summary a new way to say, this is what you owe?
Sixty bucks a month. Sixty bucks a month.
It's 2,000.
Yeah, but the investment summary is sixty bucks a month, 2,000. Yeah.
No, the hosted user will be addressing that, so this cost is just 2,000 at one time. It's, there's no sixty dollars.
The additional named.
That's just to explain what it would cost, we already have five named hosted users, which is my understanding.
Yes, so they have five.
Okay.
But only three concurrent licenses, so it's two grand to add a four license.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Did you hear that Deanna's, or Deanna seconded?
Second, sorry.
Any discussion? Meg?
Joy Scher?
Yes.
Any objections?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Shane Wolden?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett? Yeah.
Okay, Granicus.
Should we let Carl Sendler go? Do we, you usually sometimes tell Carl he can go now that the ordinance.
He's on Zoom.
He's still on Zoom.
I think you'll be on for the rainy day.
Oh, the rainy day, fine.
Hey, Carl. I'm getting.
Can't leave yet, rainy day, sorry.
Okay, all right, I'll stick.
What's this? We, Granicus, 30-day rental contract, I don't know if that is.
Previously, the, the previous help council had entered into a contract with Granicus. Granicus is a company that provides the scrubbing of various vacation rental sites, similar to Airbnb and Verbo and other ones that are out there. So we've utilized the services for the past two years. Currently, there are 18 properties that we have been monitoring for the past 24 months. Of those 18 properties, 17 of them actually are doing the listings for 30 days or more, which is a ordinance. We have one that we will be addressing through vital forms when we notify them. And then that contract.
Joe, unmute yourself, please.
The contract is in the sum of $2,500 a year. I will say that Granicus has not been as responsive as did. The searching of these various websites, we could do in-house and say we filed a $2,500 contract per year. I asked for a renewal contract from Granicus, and my folks already have that contract for this evening's meeting, and they were not responsive, and I have not received that contract. So it would be my recommendation to the council that we do not continue utilizing the services of Granicus that we do it in-house, and if there is a need in the future, we could always return to their services under a new contract. We do have a town ordinance that handles any violations related to the short-term rentals, that being the 30-day rental ordinance, so we do have that for enforcement. Granicus was just providing us a means of assisting the town in searching various sites. So that would be my recommendation to the council is that we no longer continue with the services.
Do we need a motion for that?
Probably, it needs some direction moving forward.
Okay, I would make that motion that we move that process to in-house.
Second, I just want to say it was a great idea, they did a really nice job in especially getting people aware, so when the council came up with it, I think it really was helpful.
It was, it did help us tremendously, and I think in the 24 months, it was beneficial to us.
So we have a second, any discussion? Meg?
Roll call, Joy Scher?
Yes.
Any objections?
Yes.
JD Haley? Yes.
Shane Wolden?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett? Yeah.
Okay, we've got ordinance amending the 2023-05 salary.
Madam President, if I may add, the ordinance before you tonight, 2024-01, is the ordinance amending the previously approved salary ordinance in 2024. Reason this being brought before you tonight, and I sincerely apologize for the oversight on my behalf, I had listed when drafting ordinance, the part-time salary for police deputies on page one, I did not carry that over to page four, under the Police Department section, under the name of Deputy Marshals. I should have listed part-time deputy, that being a deputy marshal part-time, at the wage of $35 an hour, which is a five dollar increase over the 2023 salary. It was pointed out to me by Trista Hudson, after a discussion with Trista, we agreed that the ordinance should be amended to reflect that. Also, in the mail there for, Deanna resolved, you'll see that we added the average, the year of 2024, retroactive to January 1st of 2024, that average was added in there. And then before the signature line under Thurlowmore, we added reserve deputy marshals in there, just to clarify that it also covers the appointment, has nothing to do with the voluntary value, it just has to do with the appointment of the number of reserve deputies that my office can appoint, and that is the changes in the amended ordinance before you tonight. Senator's office, obviously Carl's online with us, but they're all recommended, and he put this before you.
Chief, point of clarification here is, second, sorry, point of clarification here is, it's very clear in second page, second paragraph, full-time employees will contribute 20% each month premium cost for medical insurance. Within the employee handbook, as, within the town handbook as well, it's very specific that only employees are covered under town insurance. Is that, is that the intent that dependents and spouses are not covered in, by our insurance?
No, they are. We have a employee, employee, spouse, and family plan, it's been in existence for seven years.
Where is it written?
It's been the past practice of the town, so it may be no omission, you referred to the town handbook.
Yeah.
Sergeant Suley, he was with us tonight, he's been employed with the town for, you know, 26 years, he would tell you they've always had health benefits for more than just the employee.
Then I would like to see an amendment to this as well, since it needs to be written down, that that is the intent of our town to supply benefits to dependents and espouses, which is a great thing to do, right? But I think we should, we should, we should write that down, because it's not in the ordinance we're going to pass, and it's not in our, in our handbook, so I think we should, at some point.
I would defer the termability, but I would add, maybe we refer to the HR committee, and then we can discuss it there, bring forward an amendment to the town handbook, and then have the council, you know, amend the town handbook to reflect exactly what you're.
Perfect. I'm, I'm just concerned that in the absence of having it written down, it may omit people as opposed to include them, and that is not, I don't believe anyone's intent.
No, I mean, it's an excellent point, one of our police applicants that we currently have, that was one of the questions they had over the weekend, is, does the town have health benefits available for more than just me? Could my family be on the town's health plan? Because the employer they have now only allows just the employee to be on that, so that's a benefit for us all, but I'm agreeing.
Do we have a motion on the table?
I think it just.
I'm begging for a motion to approve this ordinance?
Well, no.
Yeah.
Okay, as is, so we don't have to do any.
Yes, then we move. Second, any discussion? Meg?
Roll call, Joy Scher?
Yes.
Any objections?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Shane Wolden?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett? Yeah.
Okay, we have resolution number 2024-001, transferring monies within the 2023 budget, retroactive to 12/29/24.
Motion to approve?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Meg?
Roll call, Joy Scher?
Yes.
Any objections?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Shane Wolden?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
And then a secondary motion, I would make a secondary motion to refer the matter of spousal benefits, dependent benefits to the Human Resource Committee for codification.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Meg?
Roll call, Joy Scher?
Yes.
Any objections?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Shane Wolden?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Okay, we have resolution number 2024-001, transferring monies within the 2023 budget, retroactive to 12/29/24.
Motion to approve?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Meg?
Roll call, Joy Scher?
Yes.
Any objections?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Shane Wolden?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett? Yeah.
Okay, Building Commissioner, December charges of $5,962.50 for approval.
Before, before you have discussed, point of clarification, some background here, going forward, this needs to be a line item that has to come before you. The nature of this contract is that the building commissioner is an independent contractor, he submits his timesheet and invoice for payment, which will all be part of your register. He submits timesheets along with backup or a law with regard to his time pursuant to his contract, so this in my mind really isn't any different than my invoices or Sendler's or Haas, they just come before you when they're submitted. So of course, it's your pleasure, but I don't think it's one, because this was the first time I delivered the contract, I've been assuming, that's why I probably got out of this line item. Number two, that number might appear a little high for one month, but there was a backlog of time for a period of time that he wasn't paid, because there was a contract being discussed of whether he was going to be an employee of the town or an independent contractor.
Point of clarification on that point, though, is that when invoices are submitted to the town, this independent contractor is under the purview of the town administrator, correct?
That's right.
Yes, expectations, I think, going forward, is that when this bill is submitted for approval, I'd like to see the town administrator sign off and verify that these hours are indeed.
Okay. Do we need a motion there?
Um, it's a line item, so I suggest you go ahead and pass on that tonight. And then going forward, I do think that that was the intent, so that clarification, that will get rid of confusion. I don't think anybody quite knew what to do for the first time as I was coming through.
Okay, I would move to approve the December charge of $5,962.50. Second. Any discussion?
Chief, have you reviewed and approved these, are these, are these accurate numbers?
Yes, I recently copied them on the email.
And they are, you are approving them?
I am, yes.
Roll call, Josh Smith?
Yes.
And you're ready?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Chandler?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yes.
All right, Building Inspector hiring process.
Just wanted to give you a quick update. We have received 20 applications to date for the Building Inspector vacancy. I have reached out to Building Commissioner Larry Wall. I've been working with him this week to set a date to begin the interview process. I will also include an email out to Councilman JD Haley, as our new liaison, more or less twenty, I'm sorry, to the HR committee, see if there's any involvement from any HR committee members as well, keep the HR committee updated on that process. But Commissioner Wall, I will be getting that process of interviewing potential applicant the next week.
Thank you. Michigan City, or Michiana Shores Police Contract, 2024 through 2027.
We are just getting ready to have a sunset previous three-year police service contract with the Town Michiana Shores. For everyone's knowledge, Town Michiana Shores also receives local income tax. So what that is, is it's additional.
I was sick, I really did. Rescinded is not within my family.
Okay.
With stage three.
Hello?
It's hard to scale that.
Hello, good to meet you.
It's a lot of shit.
All right. So going back to the Town Michiana Shores contract that's before you tonight, they receive additional local income tax, similar to what the Town of Long Beach receives. So therefore, during the recent negotiations with the town council, and the Town Michiana Shores, we negotiated a contract for a 10% increase for year one, that being 2024, commencing on February 1st, and then years two and three, an increase of 5% for each year, for a total of 20% increase in the contract. The clerk's office has been providing two copies of the renewal contract. The Town Michiana Shores Council has approved this contract. Upon signature this evening, I will deliver the contract to their town board tomorrow during a 7:00 PM meeting. I will secure the signatures of their board and return it to the clerk's office on Wednesday morning. And with that, I would ask the council to make a motion to approve the three-year renewal with the Town Michiana Shores Police Services.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Meg?
Roll call, Josh Smith?
Yes.
And you're ready?
Yes.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Chandler?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Okay. Town Welcome Signs, JD.
Yeah, I've, I've added this to, sorry, I've added this to our agenda. I, I moved the removal of the Welcome to Long Beach, all contractors must register with Town Hall, signs from the village entrances during the course of the campaign. And talking to people, this was a very, very consistent point of unhappiness that I think that we could remedy fairly quickly.
Where would you put those words? Because they did solve a huge problem.
Not in the front of the town.
They have to be at every entrance, that, that was the deal. So we have another sign that has that on.
We do?
Yeah, because it solved a huge problem, it got contractors to register. They can no longer say, I didn't know about.
Is it the town's obligation? Is it, is it, the, the people that have worked for me knew to come to, to town as an owner, have worked in Long Beach, they knew to register as an owner. It's my obligation to know that contractors must register. When I go around and look at neighboring communities, I don't see similar signs of that?
Potawatomi and Trail Creek have the same signs.
Michiana Shores doesn't?
I just, I, and I think that she.
And she, yeah, Michiana Shores do.
Sure do.
Okay, well, we, we did that because we had a problem that contractors weren't registering all the time, and we had to chase them down, and this really helped us solve the problem. So it was a request from the Building Commission that those words be on a sign at the entrance to the town. They didn't say they had to be on the Town Welcome Sign. We put it there because.
Well, and that's what I'm going to say, I, I would like to add that we take the existing signs down and modify and go forward with something that isn't right there in the face of the Welcome to Our Beautiful Beaches and Welcome to Our Beautiful Community. And by the way, we don't care about that, we just care about contractors.
I'm, I'm all for a, a new sign, a new pre-sign. I just am pointing out that these words really did solve the problem.
And fair, but I, I'm going to support JD and make a motion to remove the current signs and look to replace the signs with something more appealing, but also may convey the message, just in a less forward way, so.
But I don't think we should remove the signs till we have a new, new plan.
I think Chief too, I mean, to Chief's point, there is money that has been coming in, because contractors no longer, number one, they don't have an excuse to not register, it's right there, and it gives you some teeth, I think you said, you know, I mean, that you can say it's right there, so.
I can say that the collections on ordinance violations for unregistered contractors has been much better since we've put these signs in place.
I was on the heels of that. Last administration also upped fines and for unregistered contractors, both the contractor and the owners are being fined. So those are some additional things that are in place. I did want to suggest that some other municipalities I work with are having building apartments of high schools, do some projects to help with signs, and maybe you can re-initiate some discussions, have a civic in the past, I know that's been a push and pull with regard to signs, but whatever you do, it seems like there are some options out there.
Sure, and this, and this motion here is not to suggest that a replacement sign that is more conducive with a planned residential waterfront recreational community, which was, Long Beach was founded in 1921, as opposed to what is presented, is a potential better solution, but that gets into funding and other things and architecture. When, when you look at what had been presented earlier by the Civic Association, right, that there was the $12,000 cost associated with that, this is just taking one step of that, not suggesting that we don't have a sign that's more consistent with one, who we are, but also more welcoming in its nature. This is just step, this is one piece of it, without any financial obligations associated with it that would take us into design work or other things.
So your motion is to just remove all the signs?
At, at this point, yes. And then the next step would be to then come back to this group and ask for proposals to have more welcoming signs that would also support this message, would also be more consistent with our town.
Okay, well.
Can I move in?
Yes, please.
Um, just to throw out there, before someone makes this motion, maybe consider making the motion, it sounds like maybe you don't want to maybe leave these up until we can replace them with something, because I did work with her for a long many months, with Zach and the park board, a couple of people, so I think we went to the live signing of RA graphics, we met with two local signs people in town, got quotes, it was tough, it was a wild time. I mean, it, it's, it's not, we're going to be taking down signs and then it'll be at least, we'd be lucky, six to nine months, maybe not even that, come up with a design, have somebody come out and quote it, look at all the locations, the items, it's, we would have the time for probably a year. So I think we got it. I just think it makes more sense to come up with, if you guys want to come up with a plan, what they should look like, then move, take them down, put up the new ones, but it just doesn't seem like, it doesn't seem to make sense to take them down. I don't, I'm just.
Well, we've got, we've got a motion and a second.
Okay. Meg?
Roll call, Josh Smith?
No.
And you're ready?
No.
JD Haley?
Yes.
Chandler?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
I, I'm just going to make the motion, this is to take them down, as I could hear, right?
Yes.
That's the motion.
Then, I'm, I would go as well, I prefer to have replacements or we just rip them out.
Okay, that motion does not pass, but I would absolutely encourage you guys to work on getting some input on new signs and how you want to do it. But I honestly really believe that somewhere it needs to say contractors must register with the town. I don't care if it's on the same sign, but I think it really solves a problem.
Okay.
I agree, I'm all for it, I'm going to do look and all that type of thing, it makes more sense to have somebody in its place than to take them out and throw them in the trash.
Again, we didn't budget anything for new signs this year, and the budget for this year is spoken for.
Correct, so it'll happen next year?
Yeah, right. Okay, rainy day fund transfer, JD.
Yeah, this is just very much just a question I wanted to put out here, not for any, because it's a complicated question for Meg, and it's just a, a motion that the clerk reviews section 32.26A of the Town of Long Beach Code ordinances, revise the town council of, one, the maximum amount of funds that are able to be transferred into the rainy day fund, two, total amount of funds that can be transferred into the rainy day fund while maintaining a fund reserve within 25%, and three, the implications, the clerk treasurer foresees moving these funds by statutory deadline described in section 32.26D, which is March 1st. So if there were some monies that we were to move, we would need to know by next meeting, and that the clerk notify us by the end of the month and have plenty of time to work on it, is just that we have, she has plenty of time to work on it, and we have plenty of time to think about it, because we have only one meeting to move the money before the deadline.
But we didn't budget to do that, to move that money for this year.
What was the question?
We didn't budget to move any money this year to the rainy day fund. So I think, actually, I think Trista and Meg are working on this rainy day fund. I don't know that it's going to happen January 31st.
No, it's, it's, it's not an extra page. The motion is.
Just as a clarification, I, I know it's the verbage, it's a simple request, it's a simple motion, and provide the information that Meg and, and while working with Trista, determined that it can be for this year, at least that information's out there, I've discussed with JD prior to this, so it's really for informational purposes, it's not necessarily something that has been openly discussed, not that the previous administrations have administered or done it, but he's just putting it out there in general.
Yeah, I'm just asking him to provide the information.
Yeah, I'm all in favor of the rainy day.
That's all.
Yeah. Okay, that sounds great.
Council, we're happy to work with Meg on figuring out with whatever the possibilities of being able to do this by the statutory deadline.
Thank you, Congress. Okay, Holiday Construction Group invoice number nine. This says $140,795.84 for approval, but I think you got it.
We have a revised one, clerk, clerk Collins has revised one that's emailed. Carl, I think we're good now.
So it's gone from $140,000 to $293,000. I just, can somebody explain?
John, can you?
I was ready to get up anyway. So essentially, this is the holiday season, these subcontractors did not get all their invoicing into holiday before they submitted this first version of this particular progress payment invoice. So what he's asked for is, it's essentially, he's just saying, hey, these guys finally got their invoicing due, is that we'd like to, you know, make this invoice reflect their correct invoicing that didn't get into the holidays. So essentially, that's what this is. This is something he doesn't want that before, just so everybody understands, this is another progress in handling, just like we've been making all along. So I'm the guy that was entrusted by the prior council to keep an eye on the project. So essentially, when Deanna gets the invoicing paper, we're getting the clerk's office takes a look at it, processes it, I sign the cover page, if you're, if you've got that in front of you, you'll see a little approval place down there, right where that yellow highlighter is on there, is JD. That's, that's essentially my input, that the work that's on the invoice was done. Unless you want to change that procedure, that's what we've been doing all along, I just kind of keep an eye on whether the work is done. Mark and I are involved, and these, with these guys on daily basis, and we can tell what's been done, what hasn't. So if you're not familiar with construction invoicing, just for the benefit of the new council, what we have there in front of you is a progress payment, okay? So we have a contract for X number of dollars. This is a cost-plus contract, so it's slightly different, but it's an agreed upon maximum at this point. So what you see there, and if you look at the subsequent pages, you'll see the itemization of the line items in the bid, and then what percentage they're asking for on this particular invoice, and then what was paid on the prior invoicing for those same line items. So that's what I do, I say yes. Electrical is now at 30%, as it was 10% prior or whatever, so that's how these progress building payments are authorized by myself. Unless you want to change that process, which you're certainly welcome to do if you want to somebody else, you do have to have some construction knowledge, you have to understand the work in order to approve the invoice, so that's what this is.
Just to add a little bit to that, so that's just the front end, the actual funds that are sent in with the trustee from the bond proceeds, those, there's a procedure in place that between the clerk's office and top administrator that they seek approval. So what Mr. Wall is approving is just, these, this is the status of where they are, and anything that's in addition to the previous administration's set amount, those will all be in the form of change orders, and not to be too elementary on that. So this would be in the normal course of the process here, that the actual payments distribution, you still have control over that, because that will come through the clerk's office and the administrator.
So this is, this is an odd case, where you come back and say, hey, oops, we're looking for some more. But as well, then, when you look at those percentages, I'm very comfortable with the amount of work that's being done and has been done, so that this December invoice essentially is, in my estimation, correct.
Okay, I would move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I, I'm more than comfortable, I had the time, John, got your signature here from the original submission, through the normal process, it's just that we come in at 6:50 and ask for a 108% increase over an invoice that was submitted from Tuesday. Going forward, I would think it would be fair for us to be able to review and look and absorb this information, and, and I understand this, what has happened, I just feel like I'd like time to review the difference between 140 and 293 within six minutes. Not to suggest that there's anything going on here, but we've been busy, but, so I, I will be abstaining.
Well, I just have one question also, we could carry on before even voting, is, so the increase of 153, we had on the agenda for number five today, for the electrical ads, of $13,359. Is that completed work that's now in that 153 increase?
No, so we've got to know if it's differentiated between progress payments on a contractual obligation and a change order.
Correct.
So as the progress of the project continues, the owner then, and the contractor, take a look at various situations. We, in, in the case of change order number five, which is also on your agenda, see, that's involving some owner requests for changes in the. about some owner requests for changes in the electrical. There's also been other change orders up to date, that's why that's number five of the changeovers.
Correct.
That nominal number five has absolutely nothing to do with progress payment number nine.
Okay. I thought that was work that was completed, and I just wondered if that was concluded in, on that work completed, that we wanted to.
Absolutely not. So anytime we come before you for a change order request, it's something that we, the owner initiated, or there's some sort of problem that's developed, whether it's underground issues or something like that, then you have to come back to the owner and say, hey, we need some more money because this changed. That's what a change order request is. What we're talking about on the 300,000 is a progress payment on the contract.
Okay.
So in terms of understanding, J.D., I'm more than happy to sit with anybody that wants to talk about the way they develop their invoicing in terms of the percentage completely, then by rights, if you really want to understand, hey, come over to the project, take a look at it, to understand that, hey, the drywall's going up, so we're paying for it. I also want you to understand that when they make an invoice like this, it doesn't get paid until the end of this month. So there's time, if we had any issues with whether or not that progress was correct, we can always take a look at that. Construction billing is always paid, invoicing comes in, and then it's paid by the end of the month. So we bet, when it doesn't go out today, it goes out at the end of the month after they invoice today. So they're asking for approval in this, because the money doesn't go out for 30 days.
Understood.
So if you ever have any questions about any progress payments, we can certainly talk about it. You're more than welcome to come with us, you know, Mark and I, if I'm busy, I'd be more than happy to circle with you, sure.
Hundred percent. That's why I'd like time to review.
And, and I want to clarify as well, once you approve, it's approved, as we learned that, bring it in full circle and check.
Hundred percent.
Right? So that part of it is, I think this is an anomaly in the process of there being a late change.
But, but you need.
And this part of it is.
You also need to be aware that if you do not approve it, then it cannot get paid until the next meeting, which puts it at 60 days, and you have a contractual obligation to pay it in 30 days. So there's, it's a little bit sticky. If you don't approve the invoice today, it's gotta come before you get somewhere to point for approval. Now, if you do that at a special meeting between now and whenever, we could probably still make the payment.
Sure, John, and I have no issue with 140,795.84 where we had the opportunity to review it. I'm not disputing that piece. I'm not suggesting that you are wrong at all in that, but it's very clear we had time to look at it.
But I do want to differentiate between refusing to approve it this evening and what that means for the invoicing process. So if you decide you don't want to approve the 300, then you're gonna have to either approve it again between now and the end of the month when it's supposed to be paid.
Well, we have 140,000, we have a 140,000 progress invoice where we have it released at late that you signed off on.
I have not signed either one on yet.
No, your signature's here on the 100.
On the 140, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm just talking comfortable. That's why I'm comfortable going with, through with it, because that piece of it, it's the other piece. But I'm more than comfortable abstaining if the rest of the council would like to move forward with a larger piece tonight.
Yeah, it, listen, it's, it's an anomaly, it's a timing issue, and either way, you're fine. So.
Hundred percent.
Second.
Discussion.
Ralph Covo. George Schmidt?
Yes.
Andy Rangers?
Yes.
J.D.
Abstain.
Shannon Woodhead?
No.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, Community Crossing Paying Grant. I asked us this, we put on here, just because I wasn't sure where it was, and I wanted to make sure that it was missing.
Sure. We, um, passed on the first application process for 2024 after discussion with previous council, after discussion with our district superintendent, and after information received from Hassan Associates. We are working with Sam and Hassan Associates to put together a potential proposal for the second application process for 2024, what they call the second call. We will look at that information back to the council once we confirm with the treasurer in Carl Sender's office that we have the appropriate funds to cover the 25% match. What the CCNG program is, it's the Community Crossing Veneigation Grant provided to us by the state of Indiana, where we can apply up to 1.5 million dollars for paving projects for our community. Being a small community, we only have to match 25% of the grant. 75% is the grant proceeds from the state of Indiana. So we have intent to possibly put together a project for this year. I have already emailed Sam. John Wall is working with myself and Tom Goff to get a meeting set with Sam. We want to look at a previous proposal that was never submitted, and a lot of the engineering work has already been completed on, to include some stormwater infrastructure improvements. Uh, but we want to make sure that the list of the roads in that proposal is still the roadways that we want to categorize as a priority right now, like St. Lawrence out back here, roadway from Oriole on St. Lawrence, out Lake Shore Drive is in pretty bad shape right now. That road would move more up on priority for us, where before, you know, it wasn't as much of a priority. So we will have a plan to this council sometime in the following months. But yeah, look for some emails on additional information.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Holiday Construction Group change request number following, the 13,359.18, they were electrical ads.
Madam President, if I may, that is one of at least another change order that will be forthcoming at your February meeting. There'll be an additional change order for some electrical upgrades. What that is, is that as the building is progressing and the interior work is being completed, based off of the initial proposal, there are some additional levels, higher amperage for some of the equipment outside of the normal outlet that needs to be performed in that building. So therefore, there's a cost associated with that. It's gonna have to be some heavier gauge wire, some additional outlets were requested in various locations, and then also some of the needs related to our audio video technology that'll eventually be going in the building. We need to add some additional work for that as well. So this is one of probably two electrical upgrades I can see in change orders. I would say related to change orders, that we're starting to get in the home stretch, the building's gonna be finished here sometime late April or in May, so I would not suspect you'll have too many more change orders coming for you, because as we said, drywall's gonna be going up pretty quickly.
Okay. I will move to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Ralph Covo. George Schmidt?
Yes.
Andy Rangers?
Yes.
J.D.
Yes.
Shannon Woodhead?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion passes.
We do have, on our email part at tonight's meeting, there's an additional change order that we should see tonight for the 1,680.10 for a change on a door in the resonating. If you're open to hearing this tonight, give an explanation for that, or carry your words with the electrical. It's totally up to the council, but I do have an explanation to go along with this change order that we received today's day, January.
I'm open to hearing.
I'm open to that, yeah.
Um, the change order number six that's before you tonight is to allow Holiday Construction to change a doorway that is on the upper level resonating. After looking at the ongoing interior construction and speaking with both the officials from the fire department and from the police department, it's been determined that a single doorway out there would not be beneficial to us, and we need to have a double doorway out there to allow us a larger opening to move the equipment and other supplies to and from that storage area on the upper level. Therefore, we ask for the changing out of the door jam, the door itself, to include the hinges, the flush bolts, the wall scat, and the closure for that door, and then exchange the single frame for a double frame. So essentially, as you see in the council doors coming in tonight, those are three-foot doors, we're gonna change this to a double, okay? To do that, some of this change order is 1,680.10, and it's recommendation that the council allows to make that change for the overall benefit of that building as we near completion of it, while we're still in construction, basically, can make this change.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion?
So this goes down as change order number six?
Yes.
Got one.
Ralph Covo. George Schmidt?
Yes.
Andy Rangers?
Yes.
J.D. Yes.
Shannon Woodhead?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yes.
I do have just a quick comment. And the comment is that if people here on council haven't been at other meetings, there is a, there has been kind, you know, a lot of discussion, and John can speak to this as well, but about fundraising by the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department, substantial donations by residents, so there will be credits as well, so change orders come, but as you said, construction is nearing an end and the change orders lessen. But I did think it's important that the Long Beach Volunteer Fire Department is raising funds as well toward this building.
And I would add also that after last month's council meeting, a resident had made a generous, and I guess he's on tonight, so it's public record, so far, looks to be, I think, a $10,000 donation to the Public Safety Building. And then the middle of last year, a resident came in, got a $5,000 check, a donation to the Public Safety Building. So we have $15,000 right there that would go towards some of these change orders. And to me, this point, yes, the fire department has been working aggressively to reach out to the community members to generate some additional donations to help as we near completion of this building. And I will say, this building's gonna be here for the next 50 to 75 years, so we want to make sure that it's done right and fits the needs of the town, so, but thank you for making this comment.
And it is wonderful to see the progress as it's being made. I mean, to take tours of the building and go inside and just watch what has been done, it's pretty amazing.
I'm gonna put off the deer until the end, but do we need to discuss this insurance or this interest in a lot of these public building corporations, interest?
I would defer to council, or to Clerk Collins. Meg, did you get a chance to reach out to Carl Sender's office for an explanation on that?
We should have kept him here.
Yeah, that's just that we don't.
Just, uh, he wouldn't know, he's a lot better than I do.
I, I do recall maybe Chris can help here. At the time of closing, um, when we were closing off the bond for the Public Safety Building, there was a discussion in rather us to the interest payment, and we did receive that invoice that's before you tonight. It is related to the interest on the Public Safety Building, so.
This is something.
That is, that is routine and part of the fee and the interest that goes towards the trustee.
Okay. So this is here for us to approve to?
Yes. The due date is on January 15th, therefore, they had sent it to us back in December, so we could get it for you for tonight's meeting, and then this will be processed as part of the funds towards the Public Safety Building.
Okay. I would make the motion to approve the 93,407.60 in interest. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Lots, lots of questions. Sorry, I just, I'm, there's a hundred. There's 138,600 in our five-year capital plan. This is a 93,407 dollar bill for interest. Is this annual? Is this gonna be monthly? The numbers aren't adding up on the interest payments of what's coming through on the budget. Is if this is a monthly payment, it's kinda, I'm, I'm just trying to understand the frequency, because there wasn't a lot of, um, description of what this is and what it comes for and how often we're going to get to enjoy this.
Sure.
So in the interest of affordability, what Carl Sender set up in terms of the payment for, and I have not seen any of this paperwork by the way, but at any rate, originally what was set up was, we were gonna make interest payments only until we got to the point where we would make interest and principal payments on the bonds. So my understanding was that we were gonna have to pay the interest the first three years or so, and then there's actually a schedule of all the payments that's out there. Maybe you guys, it sounds like you haven't seen it yet. So there should be somewhere in the records in the clerk's office, the original scheduled payment for the building. And again, if they're calling it interest, it's because the first, I think, three, three to four years were interest only.
And that's, and that's where I'm trying to tie things out, is I can't find within, I've got 138.6. On the five-year capital plan, I don't know where.
Well, the capital plan won't necessarily dictate what the payments on the loan are, but if you look at the original document that was the itemization of the obligation that the town took on when they took on the bonds, that's the accurate figure, so I'm not sure what you're looking at, but I think we need to get, if, if there's, this isn't something I'm gonna be able to satisfy you with while I'm standing here, but I just want you to understand the concept, first of all, that it was gonna be interest only for the first three to four years.
Sure.
But then we need to also take a look at all the rest of the documents, so you guys can be comfortable with it, but I don't know if we're gonna get that accomplished.
Yeah. I mean, I, I guess the other question is, is that do we have a choice before defaulting on this bond? Do we have to pay? We have to pay this, but can we get the paperwork, please?
Sure. The clerk's office will have it in the original closing documents, this 93,000 was discussed before the previous council. So Deanna's been doing a great job of putting everything into a binder, it should be in there with those closing documents, you'll see that that was discussed. Carl Sender was intimately involved with this discussion, also relative to this 93,000 payment. So maybe if I could make a suggestion, Meg, maybe tomorrow, if we could just email Carl in the morning, asking Carl to send to the full council an explanation as to what's before you this evening, and then, um, yes. If he understands that, or if he understands Carl, kind of puts his input to it. But I'll agree.
Just further clarification, I, again, I've not seen what you're looking at, but my assumption is that the interest payments on this thing are gonna be more than 93,000. I don't know if it's set up on a biannual, you know, twice a year payment. I, I can't answer that for you, J.D., but I think somebody should ask you the question. But I don't, I don't recommend we default on making.
No, wait, I mean, that's, we don't, we don't really have a choice, but we, I think the five of us.
I think to get yourself satisfied, I'd be happy to sit down with the documents, and I'd be happy to help in whatever way that I want.
My recommendation was this, this 93,000 originally was probably to be wired part of the closing in that, but the previous clerk treasurer did not want to wire this amount at the time.
That's a different.
That's a different.
Right. That's a different kettle, that's a different kettle of fish. Now, if that's what this is, then, then we are probably already, excuse that, so.
No, it's, it's stated, we received it December, I think, 28th, payable as January 15th. So this might be, it's, it was discussed and then we're closing.
Yeah, 138.6 probably is coming out of the thing.
You can keep that if you want.
So I, I will send, I, I found some, the documents and the clerk transcripts and supporting documents, but there were funds, this is just authorized with the trustee to release sinking, these funds that are helping the sinking fund to pay capitalized interest on or before January 15th of 2024. So I will email you.
Yeah. Is this monthly, is this quarterly?
No, no, this was an annual. I, I will send this, and it summarizes, and then we can get further clarification.
Thank you.
Pay that, though, the town or the.
It gets released from the funds that are there. I will send you, and you'll get your.
Fine, yeah. I, I realize we can't fault on, we could depend, uh, no matter what, but I just want to have some follow-up questions, so, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Okay.
George Schmidt?
Yes.
Andy Rangers?
Yes.
J.D.
Yes.
Shannon Woodhead?
Yes.
Kendra Bartlett?
Yes.
Okay. And then we received an invoice for 583 dollars from Barnes and Thornburg, which was Tim Perry's attorney. And I believe I would make a motion to follow the last council's motion and not pay any further legal bills to Barnes and Thornburg for Clerk Perry.
I would second that motion.
Any discussion?
Wait, again, I, I was on, I did watch last council. I thought it was agreed pay, but no further.
This is a further.
Correct, so that's what you're saying is do not pay this because the council agreed pay what was in, but not any further.
Correct.
Okay, just make clarification on what we're.
Pointing.
They didn't agree to pay all of what was in.
There was a budget I gave for $5,000 last year for the clerk's legal firm, which, which was something that was put in by a prior clerk. Right now, there is a new budget line item for 2024, I think for $1,500, I believe, or $1,000, somewhere around that. So we have a budget line item for clerk legal expenses for 2024. The clerk, the prior clerk continued to engage his legal firm for his own uses beyond the $5,000 budget. So the council's recommendation was that we no longer pay anything beyond the $5,000. The, what was it, less one, nine?
It's like 22, $1,900.
$1,800.
So the nine, the 900 that you were talking about earlier this evening snuck under the radar and was paid without council approval. And it was involved with the clerk's legal bills to, to the firm that he engaged himself, that he was only authorized for $5,000. You guys also should be aware of the fact that we gave, I believe, a $1,000 limit on the clerk's ability to spend money unless he comes to the council and makes a request for appropriation. So right now, not only did he overspend on the budget amount that he had last year, but he authorized that 900, got the check out the door before we ever saw it.
Point of clarification to, to our council. Even though, does the town have any, have any liability? Because the former clerk treasurer incurred fees with a law firm for, well, it's very difficult to tell what it's for, to be clear. Do we have, do we have liability for the services that he incurred on the town's behalf?
I wish I could give you a definitive answer. Ultimately, my advice, and I don't really, because this could go to litigation if they decide to collect, I think the, the best response is that, and give you a little background first. Barnes and Thornburg was put on notice in April of 2023. When we were in the process of finalizing the funding for the bonds and the clerk treasurer decided he was not going to sign any of them. And we had deadlines that were coming up, that were going to affect potentially the ability to close on those bonds and the interest rate if he did it, et cetera. So he hired counsel in part to advise him. And as part of that process, I, I have emailed correspondence to his attorney just saying, putting, putting him on notice that, that there was a budgetary limit so that putting, so that he wasn't surprised at the end of the process. So do I think the town has an argument not to pay them? I do, it's really your personal preference of whether you decide to put them in the bed or not. I don't really know what's outstanding if that invoices a separate one or whether there's a.
Well, yeah, it's, it's clear this is through December 19th. So there's a few more days in the year that this, we could expect another bill, so.
Well, with some other invoices might have gotten paid. And I think that there's probably, it's probably for a different day of you looking into if you decide to. There is the nuance of the $1,000 limit of writing a check and the, and the issue of a budget. So it may be that some of those things were over budget, not authorized by the council vote that were paid under in code section that allowed them to write a check, whether that's justified or not. So do I think you have liability for this? I do not.
Thank you.
So we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? George Smith?
Okay.
My motion is not to pay a. Yes. Anita Rogers?
Yes.
J D Haley?
Yes.
Shannon Woodhead?
Yes.
Kendra Barrett?
Yes.
Okay. Kendra, you're up. Don't beat into it.
I would just like to make an argument or to ask for if there may be a release of an ordinance or a town that they repeat against feeding the deer. Would you open it up for discussion or?
Well, I'll second your discussion. Your, the ordinance we have in front of us refers to all wildlife, not just deer. And so what about people who feed birds? I mean, by this ordinance, if a squirrel eats bird seed that falls from my bird feeder, I'll be fined $1,000. Or if a deer drinks water out of my pond, I'll be fined $1,000.
I, I think that ordinance got put on the agenda by accident. I would, I would that for a brief, their per the, I would do a breakers. So that's by my means, when I was, the ordinance agreed, I would ask for Chris's help to what he thinks and what we all think would be fair. Yeah, I hope that I would put that on, send anyone to be fined or that sort of thing, birds grow, that sort of stuff. I think about, you know, big barrels or being such deer, that type of thing. So I have to come up with a way that we can solve that. Phyllis Baker, who worked so hard with a lot of the other people a couple of years ago, that they were worried that was, not that anyone's pro or against deer, but this, this group was definitely against any, any type of plant, definitely. Even they were extremely, they're in agreement that the deer is not that. And Phyllis sent us all, all the, all the documents on the town website just saying all the harm that that is. So that, that on, on those sides of the table that I think something could be, that's what the town's strategy is. So that ordinance was just a rock track. I think Chris can come up with a much clearer one and then we can, we can correct.
I think we might go for something that said maybe no salt blocks, no seed blocks and no deer feeding stations.
Sure.
Something like that.
Yeah.
But I think what we presented is really restricted. But I, I agree, I mean, I read Phyllis's early Long Beach Blue Room and Deer Committee report. And I agree, you know, I work for the DNR, we've got a deer population problem and feeding them is a problem. I don't think they should be fed. I have, their feeder's out 14 feet, I have to fill them, get on a ladder to fill them, but the deer can't reach them. So that would be my position. I would go to, you know, those three things. No deer feeding station, no salt blocks, no seed blocks or no troughs, whole food.
Yeah, the, the concept of no overt action to directly feed the deer, the concept, right?
Right.
Yeah, I'm with you.
Yeah, I would go, I can go for no feeding deer, I can't go for no feeding wildlife.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not against feeding deer, you know, this was 1980 and we only had five or 10 or whatever around the neighborhood. But when you're 17 in the yard every morning, I think we just got to take some action. I don't know what that could be, but this might just be a first step.
Mm-hmm.
Hang on, I'm not supposed to talk, but isn't there something in the state statute that you're not supposed to feed deer?
Yeah, it's a recommendation.
Oh, okay. Can't you let the people to summer?
Well, I would definitely like to hear the residents' input on this.
Sure.
But in my talks, people, I think I'm going to be pretty in favor of not having any deer feeding stations. You know, another problem is I don't, not sure how enforceable it is. I think if the police can't see something in someone's yard, they can't go in there and do anything about it. So it, it might act as a deterrent. I don't know how enforceable it is. I'm not a fan of unenforceable ordinances, but.
But there's very few things that we can do, and this is one of the things that we can do.
I agree with you.
Is that, is that if we could ask town attorney to start drafting something that's comparable to ordinances around us that is about overtly feeding deer and to put that in front of us, the, the basics of it, that would be great to see. And Kendra's done great work getting it going.
Okay.
Some more direction.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, any council comments? Kendra? Claims approval, I didn't see any claims.
That was, that was the first, that was taken care of in the December minutes.
Oh, okay.
Correct, J D. Yes, there are no claims at the December, the December meeting, no more checks were cut and she had to approve at this meeting.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn? Second. All in favor? All come. Do we have to hear a little talk?
Yes.
She just said yes. Did you say?
Yes, 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 I vote for either side.
Good job, Ralph Albo. Thank you, Rick. We got, don't leave until we all sign.
You're on the staff hours for your first meeting, you guys did well.
Thanks, Mr. Edwards.